Good evening, everyone. Welcome and thank you for joining us for the Lady Smith Chamber of Commerce 2022 Municipal Candidates Forum. I'm Sherri McTeer, President of the Lady Smith Chamber of Commerce. I would like to begin by noting that we are on the traditional and unceded territory of the Stamenas First Nations. The purpose of this forum is for the audience to gather information they need to help make an important decision on Election Day, which is October 15. I would like to welcome and thank each of the candidates for taking the time to attend the candidate forum and providing their input in the process. So let's get started. I'd like to introduce Millie Sterling, the new Executive Director for the Chamber of Commerce. Millie?
Millie. Millie will be our moderator this evening. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to 2022 Municipal Candidates Forum. Thank you for joining us this evening. This evening's program consists of four parts. We have the opening remarks, prepared questions period, open mic written question period, and opposing remarks. Let's get our evening started. We are going to start with our candidates' opening remarks. The candidates each have two minutes, and the order is predetermined. We're going to start the evening off with Jeff Fratton.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Jeff Fratton. I am a full-term member of the council. For those who don't know me, I was a boarder to my last consignance a long time ago, back in 1970. I was raised here as a graduate of your president of the majority of my life here. I'm currently living off three pines consignances with my three cousins here and our beautiful daughter. All right, just real quick, I'm a local sitting down councillor right now, a trustee from a banking library at the General Libraries, I'm on the celebrations of the Lady Smith Days. I've coached Charles T-Ball, I've been on Christmas nights for Lita, I even saw a few of our activities there. That's just all from last year. I jumped all of that with working for the mayor as a new president, and also my most important job has been a governor in the past. And all those things, I think, mean making a good bridge between our junior citizens and our senior citizens, if I expect. I'm a host of Rofffields and not the dastardly parents who have young kids. My friends and I are about middle age, in our own, not that most retirement, but we're kind of getting there. And both my parents and my aunts are all-term residents and senior citizens. So I get a very cruel array inside and viewpoints and everything, parking to parks, to nice buildings. And I get to take all of that information and have to bring it back to council today. So I just want to really thank you all for being here tonight. Absolutely, this is my other town. Everyone here shows so much interest in it, because at the end of the day, we know that Jeff Fratton knew my place, but we all know that Lady Smith is awesome town. And that's not bragging, we're one of the most other classes in the city, but that is our great town. We do have work to do, but definitely I want to talk more about the discipline issue later.
Thank you, Jeff. Thanks to Ron DeShirley.
Thank you, Millie. Great to see you all here tonight. Can you hear me now? Thank you very much for being here this evening. It's very important to hear all of our voices up here. I just want to say, my husband did not forget, in the audience here, and I moved to Lady Smith in January 2006 to own and operate a home place that I breakfast. In that ten and a half years, we met and spoke to many people from around the world. Lady Smith was a highlight for many, and they returned to our beautiful new meet to see sight town often. We developed such love and learned history in meeting so many guests that had given us, that had lived and grown up here previously, as well as meeting their Lady Smith families. I was encouraged to become President of both Lady Smith and Shemaneus Bed Breakfast Associations in promoting our community and our friendly, interesting citizens and activities. As well, I became a Chamber of Commerce Board Member, which enhanced my knowledge and commitment to our town of Lady Smith. Lady Smith has much to offer with waters, forests, arts, theater, recreation, and unique shops and services for our smaller but growing town. Almost every year since moving here, we enjoy taking part in our festival of lights. It is so well attended by so many. Coming out weeks before the Aqua Well to help with other volunteers putting up lights is actually very inspiring, to know what a joy it is for so many people of so many ages. Even in rain and snow, what goes up must come down. Lady Smith has so many festivals and events throughout the year. We are, as well, fortunate to have friendly working relationships with the Stamenas First Nations. The chief and council holds a Labor Day weekend of traditional communities.
Next, we have Ray Gorley.
My name is Ray Gorley. I grew up in Parksville, where my family and I owned and operated dairy farm, cheese company, and agriculture destination, Little Falcon Cheese Works. I was raised to value hard work, integrity, environmental stewardship, and finding innovative solutions to business challenges. I fell in love with Lady Smith when I fell in love with a Lady Smith girl, my now-wife, Rebecca. I began working as a youth director at Oceanview Community Church here in town during and after my bachelor's degree. My four years working in a nonprofit setting taught me how to get a lot done with limited resources and rallied a diverse group of people around a common goal. In 2017, we moved our family back to the farm in Parksville, where I began taking over management of our business and continued its growth and positive impact in our community throughout the many challenges, including the onset of the COVID-19 pandemic. We sold the farm in 2021, at which point we moved back to Lady Smith, where we were choosing to raise our children. I'm currently pursuing an MBA degree at the IDA. My vision for Lady Smith is to help build a thriving community for everyone. That means addressing affordability by supporting the development of more affordable housing, supporting the success of our local businesses who provide jobs to our residents. That means creating more recreational opportunities by expanding and enhancing our local parks and making progress on our waterfront improvement plan. That means improving accessibility in our playgrounds for children with mobility issues and making further progress on our excellent Lady Smith Youth Plan. It means adding more sidewalks and options for active transportation in our neighborhoods and mountain bike and hiking trails in our backcountry. And it means maintaining and upgrading our critical infrastructure, including home layers of wire, so we don't need problems for our own children to inherit. These steps and many more are what I will pursue to like for the council. Thank you.
And bureaucracy. I was a government employee for 29 years. I understand bureaucracy perfectly. I know how the ins and outs of it and how it works. There is things that I can do and bring forward in regards to my life experiences and who I am. I've done many things in my life. I am not afraid to stand up for anything. The biggest accomplishment I ever had in my life is when I stood up to my employer who was bullying me, and I created a whole new law across Canada, which helped people in their workplace and environment, and developed a new policy in regards to harassment and bullying. So people are protected by that now. It affected the life of thousands and thousands of people. I've also been involved in charities. I've been involved in nonprofit organizations. I've been involved in Canadian Theater. I moved here about six years ago. My daughter and I, we love the community. We consider Lady Smith our home. She graduated from Lady Smith School. I work at Save On full-time. We consider Lady Smith our home and part of our community. I'm throwing my name in the hat. This is the first time I've been in the political arena. So I got rough edges, and I'll omit that. I got a lot of learning, and I'll omit that. But I guarantee you, I will work for you. I am a strong advocate. I will get things done. You bring problems to me, I apply solutions. Being a member of the RCMT, as well as a special potential constable who did criminal investigations, I don't want to get to the hard part. I know how to get past all the smoke and mirrors and get to the meat and change things and make it lower. So if I cannot deliver to you, I will tell you flat out, I'm sorry, I can't do that. And this is the reason why. I will be a strong advocate for the people of Lady Smith. I want to hear your passions, what you have in your heart.
Next, we have Marsh Stevens.
Marsh Stevens. I'm a second-term local lead councillor, and I lived up in Lady Smith for just about 15 years with my wife and our three teenage kids. Quite simply, being a councillor for Lady Smith is the best job I've ever had. I love it. I love every aspect of it. I love the variety. I love the research. I love the being, absolutely everything about it, and mostly meeting and hearing from people. I think, to break these things, and councillor Patterson said earlier, I hate to talk about yourself, but I try and think about the qualities that I have that I can bring to the job. Intelligence, or at least I try to. But at the same time, humility to be a team player, which is a key thing of being on council. There are no all-stars. You work together as a team, or you could be the same. Critical thinking skills, but, and I think staff would tell you, no one's more critical than me, but I'm certainly open to the advice of experts, which we get a ton out and have to stick through. Curiosity of a person goes beyond my own preparation for things and in everything I do. So I think I bring these things forward, and I think they're vital skills to have. I have no other agenda than making Lady Smith any better place to live or complain. I love looking forward to tonight. You have very difficult call tasks. We have 90 seconds to answer very complex questions. My colleagues will tell you I'll take minutes to do that. In council, I didn't have that option tonight. I don't envy you, or maybe I do, because I'm up here on the lot speed and you're down there. But I look forward to the questions. Please, I'm happy to stay afterwards and answer questions, and I really encourage you to do that, so we can get more in-depth answers for you. Thanks again so much, and look forward to the evening and the discussions.
Thank you, Marsh. Next, we have Duck Patterson.
Thank you, Millie, and thank you all for coming out tonight, giving up your time. Jeff mentioned that he was kind of the bridge between the young people and the seniors, so I guess I'm the bridge between the seniors and the property out there on the coal road with headstones in it. I had two opening remarks pages set up, but I just can't stand doing that. My name's not Duck, really. Mum called me Donald, but Duck seems to suit a lot better. My wife and I have been residents of Lady Smith since 1975. We moved here for three years, and I'm still looking for a battery for my watch, because it's a little bit slow. Our daughters grew up here. We have grandchildren growing up here now, and this is what we call home. And I'm very, very proud of this community. I've been involved in a few events, which we all have a lot of fun at, and it speaks very highly of this community, what we can do to entertain all our residents and children. And it gives me great pride to be able to say that I am from Lady Smith. I've been on council for a while, and I honestly believe that I've been able to help. I am not one person. I'm part of a team, because everybody out here, whoever's elected, is not going to do anything by themselves. They're going to do it as a team. Win or lose, at the end of the day, the decisions that are made belong to the team, and we can walk away being proud. Lady Smith is known for its community spirit, and that's the type of people that we've got here and want to continue to attract.
Thank you, Duck. Next, we have Doug Johnson.
Evening, everybody. Hi, my name is Doug Johnson. First off, let me tell you a little bit about myself. My wife Brooke and I have lived in Lady Smith for 25 years. We built our home here, and we raised our family here. Throughout this time, I've been involved in the community. I've coached my children's sports teams, helped out at Lady Smith Healthcare Auxiliary. What amazing group of volunteers we have in this town. And I've served two terms on local parks and rec committees. My work background is in the trades. I worked for the provincial power company as a high-voltage stuff farm electrician, planning, arranging, and completing work in a dangerous high-voltage work environment. The most important thing that my work history has taught me is that communication is key. I'm running for county council because I feel that I can offer a fresh perspective. I pledge to listen and hear your concerns and bring those forward in a constructive way, and will be your voice at the table. I also pledge to work positively and cooperatively with council on staff and provide information to residents and business owners about the future direction of our town in an open, honest, and transparent manner. We need to encourage discussion and understanding of the challenges and opportunities that are facing our community. I pledge to be responsive to your concerns, always with the best interest and safety of all community members at heart. We are blessed with the abundant natural beauty, both historically and environmentally. I will do my very best to both preserve and protect our beautiful county of Lady Smith. Thank you.
Thank you, Doug. Next is Amanda Jacobson.
Hi, I'm Amanda. Thank you so much to everyone for coming out tonight, and thanks to all of the other candidates for coming in for the first time or for the second time or for the 18th. It's one of the most rewarding jobs that I've ever had myself. A little bit about me. I live and work and am raising my family here in Lady Smith. My family is quite diverse and looks very different than it did four years ago. So between that and the changes that everybody's faced over the last four years, I have to say, I have learned a ton. I was never prepared for how much I would learn over these past four years. So that's something that I really hope to take going forward, is more of an open mind. I came into this with a very open mind into my first term, and I feel like now, even going forward, I'm open even more, and I appreciate the opportunity to have learned things from this process of growth over the past four years. In my career, day to day, I work with families, individuals, people moving here, people who live here, people who want to move here. And as everybody has already said, this is one of the best places on earth to be. I can't fault anybody for wanting to live here. So I'm very grateful to have been in part of the process for the past four years, and I really hope to be a part of the process going forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Amanda. Next, we have Lyle Tesoney.
My name is Lyle Tesoney. I'm originally from a small town in West Coons called Castlebar. But I've had the privilege to call Lady Smith home 11 years ago. I'm a father of three and a husband to my amazing wife. Family is very important to me and is one of the reasons why I'm running. I would like to keep the town strong and vibrant, but at the same time, keep it affordable so families like mine continue to live there. I think it's something a lot of us are concerned about, that regular people can continue to live, to work in Lady Smith, keep our businesses and services thriving, keep our community strong. This is my first attempt at politics, and I do lack the experience, but I will make up for it with hard work and honesty. I've been actively involved in the community by volunteering, doing light up, and I also was a volunteer fire department that I also have to take leave of absence for to take upon this. Some points in my campaign that I'm running on are responsible, relevant, transparency, accountability. Thank you.
Thank you, Lyle. Now, we have Trish McCann.
My name is Trish McCann. For the past 25 years, I have raised my family in Lady Smith. My three children graduated from Lady Smith Secondary School, and now each enjoy successful careers. Four years ago, I decided to run for Lady Smith Council, was successful in taking a seat at the table. That decision has been the best retirement decision I could have made. In spite of the world pandemic, a war in Ukraine, epic climate-related disasters, inflation, rising interest rates, lack of affordable housing, and general social unrest, the town of Lady Smith continues to be a safe, welcoming community. Your town council continued to work in the background, ensuring that the quality of life during this time made the best it could be. In deciding whether to run again, I was thinking back to the past four years and questioning my own contribution to the work of council, wondering if I contributed enough. Did I make a difference? Did I accurately represent the people who elected me? Well, since I'm here tonight, I guess my answer was yes, to some degree. In addition, sharing my thoughts and analysis of proposals brought before the council and making suggestions and ways these could be improved further, I participated in several important committees representing council and town perspectives. I listened carefully to the thoughts and ideas of the committee members and ensured that those thoughts were clearly represented to council. Some of the committees I participated on were the CPAC, the PATG, the OCP Steering Committee and the Property Reduction Task Force. In addition, I introduced the idea of excellence in governance, and today I'm proud to say that Lady Smith now has a council effectively with assessment policy. This is an annual process where council helps to maximize the potential of the group and ensure everyone has the opportunity to grow, develop, and achieve their goals as elected officials. I think it made a difference in how well this council has been working together. We certainly don't see eye to eye or agree on everything, but there is very largely a respectful atmosphere and a collaborative group, and a cohesive decisions with the town and center.
Thank you, everyone. That concludes the first part of the opening remarks. Thank you to all the candidates. The next section is the prepared question period. We have two predetermined questions. They were provided to our candidates in advance of the forum. These questions were determined by the VC Chamber of Commerce and chosen by the Lady Smith Chamber of Commerce Board of Directors. There is a pre-selected order for the candidates to answer the questions, and each candidate will have 90 seconds to respond. There are no rebuttals for these questions. The first question that we have is relating to taxation and economic recovery. The question is, if elected, what tax relief policies or programs would you introduce to make our community a more tax-competitive jurisdiction for businesses? Lyle Tesoney.
Thank you. To answer the question, if elected, I would look at changing our or maintaining our current tax relief bylaw. I would like to see the tax exemption to be broadened to include all commercial buildings within the city limits, not just the limited of the downtown core. Maybe implement a two, a one or two-tiered system for that.
Thank you, Lyle. Our second candidate is Ron DeShirley.
Thank you. A balance of what we want to achieve, what we can afford, and what is imposed on our community. As a tax-paying homeowner who desires little to small and large businesses to not only open, but to thrive, I do my best to minimize taxes. I support continually to reduce the gap between small business and residential mill rates, as has been done in the past with our current council. I agree and support tax subsidies for significant commercial developments where major benefit is seen by our town. I do oppose measures that will reduce our budgetary control over the cost that determine our taxes. The referendum on which we are voting on October 15th will be taking the operating costs of our Craig Dam Johnson Center, over which we have full budgetary control, to the CBRD. This will make us payable to share the operating costs of non-recreation facilities throughout the CBRD, as well as adding the administrative costs to try to measure usage of all non-recilities. I would be voting no to the referendum. Thank you.
Thank you, Ron De. Next, we have Ray Gorley.
When I hear from local business owners, they talk about increasing parking downtown, and part of that solution is bringing more active transportation boots. They want to make sure we maintain high standards of cleanliness, more garbage cans in the beautiful downtown. They want to address the lack of commercial units available for rent, ensuring the improved commercial nodes in our new neighborhoods and maximizing use of the current commercial zone areas. They talk about the challenges of finding more employees. Part of that means providing more affordable housing to accommodate the needs of our rural or coastal residents. We also talked about attracting more tourists to our region. This necessitates investing in our beautiful waterfront and expanding on the parks, and of course protecting and promoting the heritage of our charming downtown. These are all components of what it will take to create and continue to maintain a thriving economy in Lady Smith, and things that I will soon support. Thank you.
Thank you, Ray. Next, we have Marsh Stevens.
Thank you. So I will note that the tax rates that in Lady Smith is 10.3% as a mill rate. Our neighbors to the northern south are 2.14, and our neighborhood north is 12. So the question you asked about competitiveness, I think we're actually in the realm, given, and this will be the realist talking here. In terms of a specific policy, I would also look to reduce the threshold for revitalization and tax exemption, or create a second tier. It's $200,000 that has to be spent upfront, and that's a lot for small businesses. And I think expanding the area would be a good idea to potentially. As a government though, the reality is we are constrained heavily by the community charter, the document that all this is all about. And our aid to business will be limited in what we can do. So I would continue doing the things, work harder at the things that we have started this term. Affordable housing, so more avoidance of more delays here. Improving the public realm, like we give the corporate response, so that when you come out of the store, the public is in the area, is somewhere that people want to come to on the way to that store. Continue our, executing our economic development strategy, which we have a mission to be defined of what we're doing. And of course, continuing to support our sponsors, the Chamber of Commerce, and the LDVA and community associations and organizations that do so much work in terms of volunteering themselves. That's my summary. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Marsh. Our next candidate is Alice Clark.
So we want to modelize things. We want to grow businesses in this community. We have shown that. But Save On Foods is expanding. We're getting another Starbucks. What type of businesses do we want? What do we want to bring into our community and keep our uniqueness in regards to this? What I feel is that we do need to update some of the bylaws in regards to the taxation. We need to make a desirable location for people to come, but we still want to keep our uniqueness, like Shemaneus. They have the murals. People want to see that. So what do we want in regards to businesses? Do we run big box stores? Do we want to encourage the entrepreneur that lives in this community? We like local businesses. I know myself, if I need something, I don't want to go to Dunkin' all the time. I don't want to go to Nino all the time. I want to come here and buy locally and support the people of this community. So what do we do? Well, we can solicit. We can go out and market our community and let businesses know that we are growing, we are thriving. We can see the expansions that are occurring within our community and what they can do and what they can bring within our community while supporting local people. It's a huge, huge gap, and it's massive, and it needs to be worked. But again, like one gentleman said, we are constrained, but we can work within those constraints. We can think outside of the box, being within the box. And I know that from working for the provincial government, because I had to do that all the time. So with that in mind, I want to hear from the people in this community. What type of businesses do you want here? What do you want to draw on? Thank you.
Next, we have Duck Patterson.
Thank you, Millie. Cataract surgery didn't really work for me. No, it's worked better. I honestly believe and want to make sure our local businesses are robust and will work as hard as I can, along with a team, to make business successful in Lady Smith. Being one person, as I said earlier, I can't do it, and none of us can do it by ourselves. But if we work as a team with partners such as the Chamber of Commerce, the LDVA, town staff, and going outside to get some professional help, we can do it. We can make Lady Smith attractive. Tax cuts, nobody likes paying taxes, but tax cuts and concessions, whatever you want to call them, are finding ways of, we need to forget about those, because the dollars that we don't collect there, we're going to have to collect here. And the town is a business, so we need to have the funds. So if we avoid one area, we're going to have to pick up the dollars in another area. So I would like to see us find more imaginative and innovative ways of helping the local businesses, and one of the ways is coming up with a program where we can do very large and robust shop local, because I don't, out of all the projects that I've been involved in Lady Smith, you will not see Amazon or Walmart or any of those names on any of the amenities we have here, but you'll see Save On and 49th and the Chamber and all the rest of them.
Thank you, Doc. Next, we have Trish McCann.
Thank you. Basically, it comes down to something very simple. We have to make sure that we grow the tax base faster than we grow the cost of We have to make sure that we grow the tax base faster than we grow the cost of running the town. That's just simple math. We have already in place an economic revitalization tax credit for new businesses, and we have had businesses take advantage of that to their great benefit. We will continue to use that, I hope. We have already set aside areas, new areas in town and new OCP that set out for industrial growth, areas to the south of town. In addition, we have the Rocky Creek area, which is just in the last night, in the final stages of back-up going. We have new commercial areas in the Holland Creek Estates subdivision on the other side of Holland Creek. There are three spaces set aside specifically for commercial development. And of course, we have our waterfront area, hopefully will be getting, moving towards some kind of commercial use at some point in the future as well. It's not as easy as just saying we're going to reduce the taxes for one section of the population, because that means it has to then go up. Nobody wants to be cutting services. You don't want to be doing without your recreation center. We need to have funds to pay for these things. I would have answered the question very differently four years ago. I think I know the truth now about taxes. It's not a simple equation. We have to work together as a community to build our community commercial base and industry.
Thank you, Trish. Next, we have Jeff Fertanen.
Thank you. Lady Smith has the municipal programs to incentivize business development. In current mayor council, we actually expanded that program, and we had an immediate benefit. And all you have to do is just go across the highway there, get the brand new one to go in, and that's an outcome of something that we're not for. Doug, actually, it was complicated. I hate to say it, but it was an easy answer. You take over one class, and you, you know, you're one less, uh, break, and you're there again to get in somewhere else for another class. So it's tough. And you also always have to be aware of the law on intended consequences. We saw the municipal, Ms. Abir in Long Island, they decided to experiment with a one-time business license fee. But because the business license fees went to the Chamber of Commerce, out funding them right after the Chamber of Commerce. So somebody who hasn't heard about Doug, and Trish and Doug have touched on that, has asked for years of pause. It's a balancing act, and everything is about how they must deal with it. I think Lady Smith is not perfect. I think we've done a good job of that. Anybody who was here 10 years ago, you remember how many vacancies we had downtown, and now we're down. We're all on our ways to get through. So I do need to keep going with all hearts, and definitely be open to approve this for the Chamber of Commerce, for the state, see what works in other municipal offices. Thank you.
Doug Johnson.
So my understanding is that our town taxes are derived from approximately 30% business tax and 70% environmental tax. So any decrease in one will cause an increase of the other. I'm opposed to any tax increases, particularly in light of the rising cost of virtue of everything that we're all experiencing. How I would help businesses to succeed is by offering better services from the town. Town staff or employees for the community, and as such, need to demonstrate superior service to the community. Now, many business owners in both towns have told me, well, it's a number I'm concerned, as we've heard already, parking. We need to offer easily accessible, safe parking to take advantage of the huge volume of traffic that flows right past our town every day. At present, we're often just a ride through town because we simply don't want to park. Town needs to provide clean, safe streets with ample free parking so that people can park and shop. This will increase customer traffic and will currently increase business interactions and sales. So if we can't lower business taxes or government tax and residential taxes, we must help businesses become more successful by increasing their customer traffic. Thank you.
Thank you, Doug. Next, we have Amanda Jacobson.
As I stated in my opening statement, and to reiterate, Trish McHale has already commented, my answer to this question four years ago would have been very different. It is basically a cup game. We would be moving tax per move from one class to another, so we do have to find a way to work within the boundaries that we have. So as far as any sort of reduction in taxes, that's definitely more complicated than 90 seconds was. As far as policies or programs go, I'm very proud of the changes that I saw in downtown Lady Smith in particular over the past couple of years, with the simple addition of the tables. They have really breathed a new life into downtown and brought a reason for people to stop and stay. So hopefully we can come up with more ideas for low-cost and really high-impact improvements such as that. To make it a more tax-competitive jurisdiction, I feel like we need to address bigger issues such as...
The next question we have is related to housing. The question is, will you support having council set a limit on the length of time it takes to have building permits approved? The first candidate's answer is Lyle Tassoni.
Doug, to answer that question, it is yes, but there has also been an increase in permits every year, so that's one thing we have to consider. In 2020, there was 89 permits. In 2021, there was 152 permits. So maybe we need to look at not just setting a time restriction, but also look at maybe hiring a staff member or two to absorb the workload. The permits per everything is one thing that we all wonder what goes on, and also it's not just a black and white, yes and no. So we also have to look at the broad spectrum and not just the short term. Thank you.
Thank you, Lyle. Next, we have Rhonda Shirley.
Adequate housing for all, an assortment of dwellings for all types of incomes with various opportunities for different types of living, whether you are single, family, seniors, or needing assistance. I would strongly support having standards for the time it takes to have building permits approved. As we know, the longer approvals take, prices can increase, labor availability can change, there are many factors. However, I believe it is primarily the responsibility of town staff, and they should be accountable for having standards and meeting them. Council should certainly monitor this, and if necessary, take action, but not arbitrarily set limits that may not reflect the complexities involved. Bottom line, we want safety in well-built buildings that will last and builders that will help to build in Lady Smith.
Thank you, Rhonda. Next, we have Ray Doray.
affordability and housing are top of mind for many residents, as I talk to people around town. And delays in construction projects can add a lot of cost in delays and continue to make the problems worse. At the same time, I believe in doing things right for the first time, and building permits exist for a reason. Russian roses can risk causing problems down the line, and we should, every project that gets approved and built is done well. I'm open to conversation of improving our building permit processing. However, before investing more staff to make that possible, we need to figure out how we compare it to other municipalities in the region. Another consideration is that last year, 2021, we had almost doubled the number of our free permits issued the year prior, but this year, we're on track to be back to the usual level of permits. We need some time to determine whether 2021 is a blip or whether we really are under-resourced in this department before we can decide.
Thank you, Ray. Next, we have Marsh Stevens.
Thank you. So I think the implication here is the town is slow, and is it? Well, depends who you ask. 2019, small business VC recognized us for, in fact, having an efficient system. So perception is, I guess, everything. As has been mentioned, we had a surge in 2021 and subsequent. We hired another building tech to deal with that surge. That's reality. When you have an efficient system, the only solution is more people power. I'll talk more about that later. You have to remember though, that there are building permits, building permits, and this, I think is where the perception was in. The last permit I pulled was to make a window bigger, simple, easy, within a few days. The building permit is the last thing you get before the hammer starts to swing. So if you've got a big project where you have environmental assessments, paraparan assessments, and geotech, and engineer assessment, and on and on, and then a development permit, and then the building permit, perception is that building permit came really slowly. I don't think it's the case. I think they work really efficiently. So to the question, would I support time limits? If I had clear indication from developers and contractors that they were willing to pay more fees to pay for that extra person, sure I would. If I had a clear indication from residential taxpayers that they were willing to pay another percent, percent and a half to pay for that person, sure I would. As I said earlier, we face call-ups questions, my current colleagues, that's where it ends.
Thank you, Marsh. Next, we have Alice Clark.
When I first initially saw this question, my answer was yes. And then I started thinking about the ripple effect, the effect of how it goes. Do we need another inspector? What is the timelines? So the question is, what do we do in regards to these? How quickly do we want them to move forward? When I worked in the provincial government, I was involved in the lean program, where we went through and checked to see where we duplicated our work in a vertical. That is one solution I had, is to look at how we're processing it. Are we having the same thing going through three different hands, or can we have it through one hand to speed up the process? Is the time limits reasonable? Now, we only have two inspectors, and if we're having as many permits as they say, do we maybe need a third? But the other thing too that's slowing down is we don't want to burn them out either if they have too many and we don't have enough people. So I think doing the lean program and leaning out and removing the extra waste would help speed up the permits first. Then we can look at bringing other people on board in regards to that. And where that revenue comes from, we can make a determination at that time. But I do believe that first of all, we need to look at streamlining the whole process first. Thank you.
Thank you, Alice. Next, we have Doug Patterson.
Thank you, Millie. This is a bit of a tough one because it's almost impossible for everybody out here to come up with a different answer. Of course, we want to streamline the system. Of course, we want to make it more efficient. Of course, we want to make it as least expensive as possible, but it still takes time. The town is faced, building codes change all the time. Builders are up against that. The building inspector and development, the services department have to be brought up to snuff on that. As was mentioned earlier, we've had two years of, I would say, normal, but back in the, in the mid 2000s, we were lucky to get 40 building permits in a year. So things are picking up. We have larger projects coming on. So before we look at hiring people, we need to sit down with the development community, find out what they need, and work with them on it. As Marsh said, in 2019, Lady Smith, we started before that, but we won an award for the Open for Business from the VC Planners Institute. And so it shows that we are working, but we are also growing. So trying to keep up with the growth is one of the hazards. So it's something that needs to be looked at and worked out before we look at incurring any more costs.
Thank you, Doug. Next, we have Trish McHale.
Thank you. I could repeat what some of my current council colleagues have said, but I won't. No system's perfect. There are many, many reasons for delays in building permits. Sometimes it's the builder who has the problem. Sometimes they're trying to wait it out. Sometimes there might be staffing problem in the office. There's all kinds of reasons. I don't think putting a time limit on is the answer. The very last thing I want to see is for our quality of inspection, our quality of investigation prior to or to putting out a building permit, to be losing any quality at all. We can't afford to take risks with buildings. We're building bigger buildings, bigger complexes. We can't afford anything to give risk. We just, some of us recently have a problem, they have a problem, in a building which was housing hundreds of people, and now it's uninhabitable, essentially a brand-new building. We can't afford to take that kind of risk. If you're asking for quality to go down, to make it a little bit faster, to make builders happy, I'm sorry, I can't agree with it. Can we always be watching the quality of the work that staff do or that our planning department does? Of course, the way we watch all parts of the town in there. And it is the oversight of council, I completely agree. Please know that it's going on. Thank you.
Thank you, Trish. Next, we have Jeff Fertanen.
Thanks, Millie. I'll do my best not to sound like I'm rolling record here, but I don't think setting time limits is the answer here, because what you have to do is you have to look at the consequences of setting those timelines. So council guy just talked about that. Do we compromise the safety here in the building containment by counting corners on inspections? And laser to that, one day turn around for permits, you want to hire four or five, and then they have tax implications. So is that what we want to do? We're not saying, if you hear us all, we're not saying that the system's perfect. We need improvement. Not to make trouble, I just had a big conversation with Frank who said, well, I want to go up with the meat done about this, and he wants to sit down and have a conversation about the experience we've been through. And I'm like, oh, he'd love to do that. That'd be a great thing to talk about areas that we can improve, and also areas that we can do, because as I started pointing out, I was going to scratch that for mine now, because I was going to put all the words to, right, one of the words, we need to work well. There is room for improvement, for sure. Just don't think that setting time limits is going to be the, the only answer to that. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Next, we have Doug Johnson.
I don't agree with the guideline about setting part timelines on building permit application equations, but I don't say that as employees of the people of Lady, as employees of the people of Lady Smith, we need to ensure that these are perceived to be met in time and efficient manner. If it's perceived that the building permit approval times are not meeting expectations, then we need to look at it and ask why. Maybe the process can be streamlined and made more efficient, or maybe additional staff need to be hired to address the growth rates that we are experiencing. Either way, efficient time and service should always be the goal of the town staff for the people of Lady Smith. After all, the town staff are public servants and must always strive to meet the needs and expectations of the residents. At the end of the day, people dealing with any service provided by the town must feel that they have been treated fairly and have received efficient and effective service. Thank you.
Thank you, Doug.
Well, the perk of going last is that I escaped what everybody else said. I do not, I would not support government permits having a time limit for approval, because the quickest way to do that is to just not prove. I think that the scope that goes into building permits is too wide to be able to restrict staff to do their due diligence and builders to do their due diligence. Additional work that goes into some building permits versus, as Marsh said, putting in a window is a pretty quick turnaround. I know personally, we looked into getting a substantial permit, and we surveyed, we had to get a bunch of other things. So doing the work that goes into it just makes this, I think, attainable and unrealistic. I, beginning of my term, I was told you can have things fast, cheap, or easy. You can get two of those things. And I think picking two of those, you're going in a situation, you would be sacrificing quality. So I would not support this.
Thank you, Amanda. And that concludes this portion of the evening and prepared question period. We are coming back to our open mic portion of the evening question period. This is a question for Trish McHale. So Trish, will you support changes to Lady Smith's street names to honor this nearest First Nation?
Thank you. The short answer is yes, but the longer answer is it's a bigger question and just something that the town would support and citizens would support. It has to be in conjunction with them, perhaps even at the request of our sweetest neighbors. It's their business, it's their needs. If that's a conversation they want to have with us, I'm absolutely open to having it, but I think it is inappropriate for us or any town to start transitioning over to names that have not been put forward by the right sources. It's, it's a complex question, and it is very much a deep part of moving towards our reconciliation, reconciliation. It's, it's a complex question, and it is very much a deep part of moving towards our reconciliation. So I hope that answers that for you.
Okay, Jeff answered. The Jewel, as you know, is a piece of property behind the horseshoe pitch and its plan for development of condos. And do you agree with that? Or would you, I would like to see that property put into Transfer Beach Park for future growth. And within ten years, we want that park of ours, and I'd like to see that added back.
Thank you, sorry I didn't catch your name, but thank you for the question.
Very nice.
Thank you for the question. I bet you're gonna be easy one. I know that this is a polarizing subject, everyone. The waterfront area plan, so many, so many eyeballs, so many people, so many brains, like a lot went into that. I actually recall when the Jewel, as we call it, was a campground. But it was a campground, it ended up becoming more homeless place. I'm sure you remember that very. Right, so it's, it's a dilemma. We have to, this is about what I talked earlier, we're trying to find the balance of things. We have to be able to fund that waterfront area somehow. And I think it can be done correctly, and I think that's the place to do it. If you look at, look at a close, heights of the buildings, you're not gonna be able to see them from the highway. The way that it steps down, you're gonna come around that corner, you're not gonna be having this big real building. I know you don't agree with it, I get it, it's one part of the plan that people aren't enjoying. I can also tell you, during the last election, when people came to talk to me one-on-one, they were so excited, and I'm gonna work there, I'm gonna buy a condo down there. Because I tell you, anybody would love to. So I wish I could choose my answer, and I'm not possible, so I'm sorry. That's how it feels.
Thank you, Jeff.
I'm Becky, I've been here about six years. And I have a question for Doug Johnson. Hoping you can clarify what I understood you to be saying. I'm wondering, when you keep speaking about City Hall and then seemingly, my understanding was you don't feel they're doing a good job, you need them to do a better job, that they're not getting our money's worth from them. As somebody who works with them, and I'm not gonna say where I work, but I work with them from outside entity. I have had many interactions with our local department, our home, all departments really. And I'm wondering if you've ever taken time to actually sit down with, let's say, one of the clerks or an actual building inspector, look at their work, or look at what they're actually doing, whether it's a taxation department or a building department or whatever, and actually see what they do. Because the service I have, I'd like to see, like you keep, you're worrying those things, like they need to be more, they need to be better, and they need to be more efficient. A few of you mentioning these kinds of things, I'd like to know, but you've actually sat down with people in the firm, but don't particularly drop that off, so I'm like, you're, I'm gonna do that. Thank you.
Thank you very much for the question. I did not mean to imply that people aren't doing their jobs. What I was looking for is efficiencies and the way that the work was done. Customer service in my background is foremost, and so that's, that's what I resort back to. When, when people are happy in their work and they understand what their job is, and really why they're doing it, they're doing it for the people of the community, then there comes a point where work doesn't really feel like work anymore. It becomes a return of service to the people. And that's where, where my roots are, that's where I'm coming from. So I certainly wasn't to imply that people weren't doing their jobs. It's just, my base comes from a customer service perspective. And so, you know, the question about the building permits, it was an open-ended question. And it was implying that the building permits were taking too long. And so I'm about gaining efficiencies, and I'm about treating the customer as well. And so if there's, if there's a problem between those two, then we can, we can work towards identifying it and rectifying it. But, you know, people, especially when we're town employees, we need to be always projecting good service, quality service.
My question, have you actually sat down with Jeff Moncail?
I have not. My basis is from the question in, in what we were supplied with, which was implying that the building permits were taking too long.
Thank you, Doug.
Thank you, Alex Stewart. My question is sent to Alice Clark. In the view of our First Nations people, I'm an elder given my age. And should you be elected, will you work with various fellow council to encourage the formation of a Elders' Council, representative of Lady Smith meeting with our First Nations elders for ongoing now laws specific to major initiatives impacting our community? Because they won't be decided upon without the input of Shingas First Nation. And we all need to understand that as well.
When I was in the RCMP in Alberta, I worked on the First National Reserves in Grand Prairie and in Bonneville. I was the first female member there, so I was quite an anomaly. What I did is I spent my time on the First Reserves, getting to know the people, getting out of my police car and talking to them and getting to know them. I worked in Beaver Lodge, and I had to depend on them to help me because there was many times I worked by myself. They saw me as one of them. I am more than willing to work with that and help move that forward. Especially with the history given with the RCMP, I want to mend those bridges, and I want a stronger relationship with our First Nations. I am willing to learn the culture. I find it interesting, I'm respectful of it. I'm training actually to be a shaman myself in regards to that, I've been asked. And I've taken that up, that honor in regards to being a shaman. So I have a very strong connection with that, and I have a huge respect for the community as well as the people. Thank you.
So this question is for Alice, again. Alice, would you support dedicating council seats for folks who traditionally face marginalization?
I believe it's important to hear from everybody. I do have some understanding, that's it, just an understanding. I have not lived their lives or understand the consequences or the disadvantages they have within our community. COVID has shown that we've gotten into a false sense of security, thinking that everybody was taken care of. That punch holes through the bottom of that. With our community, I am more than willing to listen to people with disabilities, hear their story, and address their issues, and help them move forward in regards to that. Not only as individuals, but also as the community. And stuff is pointed out several times already that we need to work as a team. I know how to work as a team, and I know how to work as an individual. Being a member, a police officer, like I said, there was many times I worked by myself. And then there was times when we had a serious situation, I had to be pulled in and be part of that team. So I know how to work both very well. I believe in hearing what people have to say. Communication is huge. I was in the RCMP long before we had tasers, long before we had pepper spray. So I had to listen, really listen to what the people said, so that I understood the situation, what I was getting involved in. And if I didn't listen, it could be my life. So I listen to people and what they say, and I actively listen because it's important that you feel heard. It's important that you feel that I hear you and I understand what the situation is. So dealing with somebody who's marginalized, it's very important that I hear their voice, understand their situation, and help them. I want them to move forward.
Thank you, Alice. Thank you.
And Ray, how do you feel about this sort of densification of placement? And what will it do to our heritage?
Well, thanks so much for the real softball question there. The, appreciate the question. Should we use the midnight? Here we go. Nice, easy question there, appreciate that. The, everyone loves the form and character of our downtown. It's award-winning, it's famous across Canada, it's why many of us live here. I enjoy it every day, support all the businesses down there and getting services on First Avenue. No one wants to see towering high rises over it. Now, the official community plan is a document that's under revision. It's a living document, it's had an unprecedented level of community input from people, including myself and my family. And it's still to go through stages of public review. So it's not something that is locked in place and spared. However, when we're thinking about accommodating the needs of our growing town, I support densification where it makes sense. There's a few examples of that that are happening. There's one near my house, on Grohl and the highway near Grohl Street there where we live. And we can't just keep cutting down forests to keep putting up more suburbs. There's a demand for single-family homes, that's always gonna be part of the solution for housing our community. But there's a massive demand for townhouses, duplexes, resident and multi-store residential in their places where it makes a ton of sense to put it. Speak with a lot of friends who are retirees, who are trying to downsize. They don't have options because we haven't provided enough homes like that. So I'm, I'm for it where it makes sense.
Thank you, Ray.
Yes, my name is Ray Burton. Questions for Marsh, please. Rogers wants to erect a ten-story high tower in the Thunderworks Yard on Sixth Avenue. Do you support this location, which is in our densest residential area? With possible long-term negative health effects and visual pollution of the area? When Rogers say they just want the service in South Lady Smith, and they do not seem to have investigated anything except public works where they don't have to get changes to the plan, they don't have to comply anything, they don't have to chop down any trees, unless they probably get in trouble with the, with the environment. So I'm in favor of that location.
So this is where there's two groups of people up here. The elected officials who have, are bound by certain things, but I think I can skirt around right here. We're waiting for results of the proponent coming back. And so they will probably have a public hearing process that I have to have, as other legal folks tell you, an open mind, but I don't have to have an empty one. Personally, I know there are a lot of people who are concerned about the safety of it. I think the cat's out of the bag in terms of our exposure to micro energy that are all around us, and that that's now maybe a deciding factor with me. I think that what it is, is, and I mentioned earlier about our assistance to business, really, I'm just uncomfortable with it being on public property at this point in time. I'm gonna go into any future deliberations with an open mind, but at this point in time, that's, that's how I'm feeling. It's a relatively mediocre amount on either the town would be getting in terms of rent. There is the aesthetic concerns that you've mentioned, certainly too, and the proximity to the trail. So my inclination at this point is probably a fairly high percentage of no in terms of support for it. Thank you.
This question is for Trish Moncail. Would you support the development of more cycling infrastructure? Example, bicycle stands at Transfer Beach so that bikes can be properly secure?
Thank you for the question, definitely. I think that the town of Lady Smith is gradually, over time, been quite successful in introducing electric bikes, which helps us to overcome the burden of the hills that we live with. I unfortunately don't have one yet, but perhaps someday soon. I think, I think there are safe ways to do it. I think there are safe ways to have them installed. I'm talking about pathways. And also the addition of stations, as you're talking about, is just a win for cyclists. It's a wonderful opportunity for us to move away from cars a bit. And I recognize not everybody rides a bike. But there are more and more people riding bikes. More and more people are safely riding bikes and getting healthy as a result of it, whether it's electric or whether it's manual. I think it's something which is progressive, and I think it's the way the world is going, is certainly the way Vancouver Island is going. And yes, there's a bit of a learning curve, it's like a learn-to-use traffic circles. We can do it. It's a good idea, and so yes, I support that. Thank you.
Thank you.
So the question is, will you guys continue developing and paking over Paradise with your official community plans?
Okay, so lot time packed there. First off, you need to read the new draft official community plan. I think a lot of your questions will be answered. The highlights of that plan, I'm gonna touch on based on what you said is no expansion beyond present boundaries at all. We're moving to denser, some density in key areas to reduce our infrastructure costs so that we're able to do more and in fact get ahead of that infrastructure debt. I think if you were to watch last night's meeting around what we've done in Holman Creek, it's, as I said last night, I think it's the best modern neighborhood that's gonna be created in Lady Smith. It's a total neighborhood. So we're totally mischaracterized if you think we're development themes. This OCP is the most progressive document that I think of all the planning documents, and we have a slew of them that are progressive, the Holman Creek Area Plan, the Community Visioning Plan. We, if anyone tells you that Lady Smith won't grow, they're one of two things. A liar, or they don't know what they're talking about. We have no control over that. What we do have absolute control over is every aspect of how it grows. And that's what this new OCP is trying to do. I so encourage people to read it. I'm disappointed in the perception that's getting on social media because it's cherry-picking and fear-honoring, which just leads to misinformation. I'd stand by that document a hundred percent. It's not perfect, nothing is, but we can't allow perfectly the enemy of the fair in this sense. So I'm happy to talk to you more after this. Love a cab. Black cab while I'm talking, awesome. And then five seconds back, please. I hope that answered your question, I'm happy to talk more.
Thank you, Marsh.
So the question is, will you guys continue developing and paking over Paradise with your official community plans?
Okay, so lot time packed there. First off, you need to read the new draft official community plan. I think a lot of your questions will be answered. The highlights of that plan, I'm gonna touch on based on what you said is no expansion beyond present boundaries at all. We're moving to denser, some density in key areas to reduce our infrastructure costs so that we're able to do more and in fact get ahead of that infrastructure debt. I think if you were to watch last night's meeting around what we've done in Holman Creek, it's, as I said last night, I think it's the best modern neighborhood that's gonna be created in Lady Smith. It's a total neighborhood. So we're totally mischaracterized if you think we're development themes. This OCP is the most progressive document that I think of all the planning documents, and we have a slew of them that are progressive, the Holman Creek Area Plan, the Community Visioning Plan. We, if anyone tells you that Lady Smith won't grow, they're one of two things. A liar, or they don't know what they're talking about. We have no control over that. What we do have absolute control over is every aspect of how it grows. And that's what this new OCP is trying to do. I so encourage people to read it. I'm disappointed in the perception that's getting on social media because it's cherry-picking and fear-honoring, which just leads to misinformation. I'd stand by that document a hundred percent. It's not perfect, nothing is, but we can't allow perfectly the enemy of the fair in this sense. So I'm happy to talk to you more after this. Love a cab. Black cab while I'm talking, awesome. And then five seconds back, please. I hope that answered your question, I'm happy to talk more.
Thank you, Marsh. And Jacobson? If you were re-elected, what will you do to address the needs of people who are homeless in Lady Smith? The shelter is often closed.
That's a very important question. I would really like to see respectful and positively returned with the LSCA and the great work that they do in helping the folks that they do within our community. As far as council goes, we have shifted the shelter to common zoning. Have it reelected, and we were waiting for bulwarks, so hopefully that will, the ballistic project, and hopefully that will help alleviate, at least provide some housing for some folks. Myself, I'm sorry, I really had a loss as to, it's such an encompassing issue that it's really hard to say, you know, a list of things in particular that one person would be able to do to address, to address this issue.
My question is for Trish Moncail. Same topic, homelessness. So Duncan has responded, it's by putting up fences around certain properties so that they don't, they're not hanging out. What, what's that has done is to push the homeless in other directions to the point where when I go to shop, they'll come and count on my vehicle windows looking for money and handouts. And what I see is that here in Lady Smith, the council has decided that cutting trees is the way to deal with homelessness. And so if re-elected, my question is, what would you do? And so if we elected, my question is, what would you do differently?
I missed a key piece of the question. Sorry.
So the question is, what would you do differently to address the homeless issue, rather than just sort of pushing them from one area to another and creating a problem in a different area? Like playing whack-a-mole? What would you do differently? Because obviously, just cutting trees didn't make it go away. How would you, if re-elected, Tricia? How would you address that situation differently?
So if I could just ask for clarification, are you referring to those who are choosing to live outdoors?
For some, it's a choice. For some, it's a financial consequence.
Okay.
So there's many reasons for homelessness.
Yes, of course.
But cutting trees...
Over the course of the term that we've had, there has been a fair bit of attention of council onto our homeless situation. We have the homeless... It used to be a cold weather shelter in the bottom of the Rialto. During COVID, however, it was inadequate because there wasn't enough space. And so for a period of time, people were moved into an outdoor cabin in the summer. Following that, they were put into another building in the town that we believed was going to be more successful at housing a greater number of people. It's my understanding now that we've also put in an... The Rialto building has had an expansion to the number of people that it can safely hold. And there's been several beds added to that facility over time. And I'm not aware that we are falling short on how many people who are requesting a place to stay for the night. It's also no longer a cold weather shelter. Our shelter is open year-round, as far as I understand. And so I think there have been improvements made. Nothing's ever perfect. And I don't have the answer on how we support people in moving from the outdoors indoors if they have the choice. Some people choose not to. It's my understanding that in Ladysmith now, we do have a fairly adequate amount of accommodation. But I could be wrong. Thank you, Tricia. Another question that's been submitted. This one's from Marsh Stevens. Are walking trails being incorporated with the new developments? Can... Have they been kept relatively level? Or can that be taken into consideration to have level walking trails incorporated into developments?
Not because smart out its Ladysmith, so... Yes, yes. In terms of the cross-section rate, 100%, that's... I mean, that's... I think the clearest example of the trail that we built is South Ladysmith. And it's built to meet their standard. And I think that's probably where we want to go. That is the gold standard. There's in Lot 5 across the... Coming along to be crossing. There may be a question about that. There's extensive trail that was in there, but they're going to be around the home. And so they will be flat in cross-section, but certainly not flat in terms of elevation change. So if the terrain allows it... Well, sure, some trails will be moved out of that lot. Some will be developed like a trail between Ladysmith and Shemanes that is, you know, much more gravel-like. And things like that. Every development doesn't necessarily include it, but as again, did actually the OCP. It's certainly something you're going to see more of. And I'll just put a plug into the OCP as the step code requirements we build. Better, more, better rigs of types of housing, things like that. I've got 11 seconds left. So I'll leave it at that. I'm happy to talk more with the question over here.
Thank you, Marsh.
And there's two along the Shirley. If elected, will you work with Maring Council and encourage all Maring Council, the Maring Council, to master plan the balance of the foreshore between Transfer Beach Park, Ludlow Road, the oceanfront, and the Adal Highway? We do only own lands. It needs to be master planned. We want to make sure that there's a council to master planning and make sure we get it right. We only have one question.
Thank you, Alex. I totally am smitten before waterfront. And I want to preserve the most natural aspect of it. I do understand, I think, the master plan for the condos. Is that correct? Is that what you're talking? Like the building of the condos? So if I could afford maybe I caught one of those condos, but I know I'll never be able to afford one of those condos if this is what you're going to. So who's going to be living there? I'm a railroad buff. I do live near the railway. And I think that we need to keep that line open. I don't know if I interferes. I haven't looked at that detail for it. I think that I personally would like to see a roof out there with, you know, a little popper restaurant with ability to have our local artisans on the roof selling their products to our, you know, visitors and locals. I mean, because we have so much to show. So I think that I would want to work with it. And I'm usually a very flexible person that can, you know, work in those spaces.
Thank you. Dr. Patterson?
Could I be back?
Yes, you can.
I'm going to stand for this one. So I'm going to counteract some war here, I think. The fact of the matter is, the whole of the master plan is the waterfront plan. And there will be subsequent planning and there will be a whole process. A picture's worth a thousand words, but sometimes the conceptual pictures are taken. And that's the reality. It's a foregone conclusion. There's incredible public processes that will go forward. 52% of the waterfront area plan will be public park. It will be waterflooded park. It's Slack Point. And then in terms of Crown Waterlots in the foreshore. Crown Waterlots, Stominus is a full parker in this with us for a reason. Crown Waterlots are either Crown Waterlots or they are First Nations land plans in essentially. So there's a whole bunch of work out there. But to say that we aren't, we have a plan that we're going to... We are going to make it so we can expand park space. This is just absolute Facebook nonsense, quite frankly. I'm happy to talk about the plan with anyone. As Counselor Patterson said, it's about saving your money. So the underlying premise is that we do this with real property reserves or grants. So we're maintaining absolutely as much public space down there around the Arts and Heritage Hub, around the... all of the waterfront, in fact. But in exchange for that, we need to develop some of the land to be a good park with Stominus to execute the plan. It's going to happen over decades and will be fully in the public realm to discuss. Thanks.
Thank you. The next question is for Dr. Patterson. Congrats on receiving the Mom Service Award at UVCN. You have taken a seat at council for a long time with a certain perspective. How will you bring diversity to council? How will you include a diversity of perspectives?
I'm sorry. Can you repeat that again?
How will you bring diversity to council?
I honestly can't answer that one. I'm going to kill them. Mom would kill me. I'm going to do exactly what I've been doing for the past 35 years. I hope it's not, you know, it's not totally out of me. I am just going to continue working with town staff and the community and members of council and hoping to steer the community in the direction that we're going, which I think is the right direction. Ideas that I have, I will bring forward. Ideas or thoughts or concerns from the public, I will bring forward like I have done for the last couple of years. And I don't know if that's diversity or not. This is what you get.
We have a question for Dr. Johnson. What is your position in regards to protecting Ladysmith green spaces? Like all in three.
Thank you. I believe we can all agree that green spaces are vital and critical to joining town. We have beautiful watercourses that need to be protected. Fish carrying streams, green systems that feed into those systems need to be protected also. One green way I would consider acting upon though is the railway. I would like to see that used as a bicycle lane, not to promote green travel. I believe in that. And other green spaces, of course, are waterfront. I believe in preserving and protecting that to the much extent as humanly possible. And so that's really the last undeveloped piece of beautiful real estate on the lower end of the east side of Vancouver Island. So yes, I believe in protecting and enhancing green spaces. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, my name is Brian Truman. My question has to do with transportation as well. Right outside here, there's a bus that goes...
Excuse me, sir. Who is the question directed to?
Oh... Marsh. Sorry. Right outside here, there's a bus that goes to Nanaimo. And if it was any further north, it would be in Cedar. My question is to the Marsh, but this could go to whoever talks to the BC Transit. Why does that bus not go down to South Davis Road and come back? Somewhat similar to the bus that goes to Duncan. If you understand, the bus that goes to Duncan, it starts from right over here next to the 49th and it goes south and picks up people. This bus costs $7.50, stops at one place, which is the airport, and then continues on to Nanaimo, where they drop people off on Harbor Park. Now, anybody, like, let's say you have a student...
Excuse me, what's the question?
My question is, who the hell set that up? That's stupid. I'm sorry.
How come you don't...
Who the hell did you try to arrange with? And what can we do about it? I mean, that's BC Transit. That's the people of British, so let the medicals pass. So, okay.
So when you yelled the words "BC Transit", that's the short answer to your question. Last year, when BC Transit came to present the route to us, we came out from seven ways to something. We asked them about different road links in town. We asked them about different spots to be picked up. We asked them about... So then pickups. We asked them about everything. You can watch the video. It was almost an hour long discussion. At the end of that, after hearing, well, we've done our study and we've done this, we realized that we were essentially in a take-or-relieve scenario. And that's why the resolution reads, we accept this route with reservations. The mayor and Tyler Brown, who's the chair of RDN, have worked very hard in this final special to get this. And we thought, we can't let Perfect get in the way of it good enough. There's still work to be done 100% on cost of it. They did say to us that we rely heavily on the drivers to tell us if things are going to arrive, which is a big point when we said, are there going to be backups in the traffic circle? So we're waiting for the ridership numbers and the driver feedback to give to them. And we're hopeful. But it is, much like the Ministry of Transportation, sometimes incredibly frustrating for local governments.
You're not going to get the ridership when you charge $2.50 to South Davis Road.
100%, 100%. And they take it like... 100%, 100%. And all I can say is, we went to the math on this and we got the best deal we could. There's more work to be done, 100%.
Thank you. Question coming over to town is for Dr. Patterson. What will you do to make sure disabled adults are housed in Ladysmith?
As a member of Ladysmith Council, I would actually push the town to push BC Housing and the province to do more affordable housing, such as what the Resources Centre is building up the hill there. Honestly, it's not really our job to supply housing. It's the province's job and the Fed's job. Now, I know that's not going to impress some people, but our job is looking after what you people are using. But it's something that we need to get behind because those guys ain't going to do nothing unless they're pushed. And so our community needs to... We could come up with a plan. And I'm all in favor of if an organization wants to build low-cost housing or affordable housing for people with diverse abilities, low-income families. If we have an acre or two, I'm in favor of the town putting it forward. But the province and the feds have to be on board to pay for it and make sure that it is affordable for those people. So we can do our part. But right now, in my opinion, we're being hung out to dry by the feds and the province. Because if they can wash their hands of the problem, and we're the ones that carry the flag.
Dr. Johnson? I'm not too sure why, but around the topic about topography and extreme weather events, how can people on council where there isn't absolute engineering expertise discuss events such as the crumbling of the wall down by the Maritime Society, erosion in the creeks, steep plots on hazard lands, and just protect us in that way? And I know that Tricia mentioned, you know, quality is one of the biggest factors because it's most people's livelihoods at stake if their properties wash away or if we have flooding and racking up our water treatment plant. It's always been a concern, even though it's part of the charm of the town. So I'm just wondering what kind of surveillance you would have over issues like that?
Excellent question. Very detailed. I would like to follow up with you later about that question because I'm sure I don't have all the answers for that. Again, though, any erosion waves or waterways is a concern. Erosion of people's property.
I want to thank our sponsors, 49th Parallel Road Street, The Chronicle, and Take5. Thank you to the town of Ladysmith for waiving the rental fees for Heidi Hall. Thank you to our chamber directors for supporting the chamber on this event of their time. We met our president, Sheri McTeer. Our past president, Tammy Leslie, is busy up here. Thank you to chamber members, Michael Thrill, sitting at the timer, and Mark Drysdale as well, volunteering at time. Thank you very much, everyone.